How are you guys? How are you Victor? Are we ready Tucker?
Is he on his way or is it home? Oh, he's here. Okay, alright.
Oh, just wait. Should we get going? Okay, let me start. Okay, we'll have the Board of Finance called to order. Judy, you want to please read the roll?
Neil Buttonet.
Here.
Judy Noble. Tom Schulte.
Here.
Amy Carroll. Here. Todd LaVieri.
Here.
Michael Chen.
Here.
Chris Labrie.
There.
Victor Alvarez. Maria Winegarden. Bob Hamel.
Here.
Colin Dobbin.
Here.
All present. First selection. Yeah, I'm putting them down. Thank you. All present.
Okay, on the Town Council side again, this is the Board of Finance and Town Council Special Meeting, April 25th, 2022. It is 7:04 PM and we need to call the roll. Penny, will you call the roll?
Robin Bates-Mason.
Here.
Rita Patina. Tom Butterworth.
Here.
Mark Timske.
Here.
Steve Carl.
Here.
Luke Kaufman.
Here.
Mike Morrow.
Here.
Maria Norton.
Here.
Kimberly Jordan. Hillary Orman.
Here.
Christina Ross.
Here.
And Young here. Everyone is here.
Thank you Penny. Well, the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, yeah, so we will take public comment now. Members of the public are welcome to speak to the Town Council on Agenda Topics Scheduled for Review and/or Vote. Speakers are requested to provide their name and street address. Comments will be limited to two to three minutes, subject to number of speakers. We'll take public comments on item, on Agenda Item Number Two at the moment. Would anybody like to speak on Agenda Item Number Two? I see no one in the room. Tucker, is there anybody online? Okay, let's move on. We'll do the Pledge of Allegiance next. All rise.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so I'd like a motion to move into Executive Session. So move Judy second. Maria? On favor going to Executive Session? Say aye. Tom and Michael?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Tom Schulte, aye, and I heard Michael with Chen said aye. Okay. Opposed? I just want to get through my motion. Anybody opposed? Okay. I'm inviting everybody. Or Steve is?
Tiger, Bill, Tucker, Anne, who else is coming into Executive Session? Andy and Luke.
Are they online? We have to.
We're up next, yeah, we're up next.
Okay, those are invited. Right.
Okay, Town Council, we will be voting to go into Executive as well. As you know, rules about real estate negotiations and contracts, so this is under a real estate negotiation, so. We need a motion to go into Executive Session. Christina, Penny seconds. Tucker, you got, you have that? Okay, all in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you after. Are we back in? I should say that we decided to table those two items.
Did you sign in? Yep, underneath. Yep, that's the order that the speakers are gonna go.
Are we good Tucker?
And should I write down John?
I just want to make a comment on, on the agenda. Okay, can we call the meeting back to order? I know you're not talking about what was in Executive Session, so. Can't be. Okay, just from a Board of Finance point of view, we are tabling Agenda Item on the voting of the transfer of the $750,000 from the Playhouse Fund to the Capital Fund. And the approval of the $1 million of ARPA funds to a meeting to be scheduled probably next week. As we didn't have enough data to make that decision.
And Steve, you're tabling your? We are tabling those as well. Yeah, we do. Let's see, we are.
I just picked up on those two because of the order.
Okay.
Well, you didn't do the letter of intent.
Yeah, so our, our item number six, Town Council Letter of Intent, we're gonna table that as well till we get more information. Also, the $600,000 on the Town Council Agenda for the Playhouse. And finally, the vote on the ARPA Fund, so. All of those we'll get more information on. And now we can move on to the next part of our meeting. And the next part of our meeting, we are gonna take public comment on the first item on the agenda, which was the Powerhouse Theater. So if we have a sign-in sheet Tucker for public comment? And depending on, as we, we always read the disclaimer before the meeting starts, depending on how many we have, limited to two minutes if possible. Tucker, how many speakers do we have? Four, okay. Five, okay, so yeah, we'll limit it. Yeah, that's perfect. So we'll limit it to two minutes each. Just introduce yourself and your, just state your name and address.
My name is John Hastings. I live in Pellon, New York, and I'm here because I've been teaching improv class at the Powerhouse Theater this year. I spent 17 years as a fourth grade teacher at New Canaan Country School. Before that, I had a career in the theater. And the reason I'm here is because improv is a wonderful thing for kids in this day of internet and devices. Kids use only their imagination. They love the class. It turns them on. You don't need an internet. You don't need a computer. You don't need an iPad. The one thing you do need is space. And the one thing we haven't had is space. I've done this program with about 50 kids over this, over the year. And I have done the show. I've done the class onstage. I've done it outside. I've done it in the lobby. I've done it in a storage room. But sometimes I've had to cancel class because there wasn't room. And if the potting shed became a dedicated educational space, we would have free rein to bring not just my program, but a lot of other wonderful educational programs. That I think kids really need for their mental health these days. Because when kids can use their imagination and just be kids, I think it's a wonderful thing for them.
Nice, well done. Tucker, who's up next? Hi Megan.
Hi there. Nice to see you all. You're gonna have to forgive me. I'm not good off the cuff, so I might read my notes. I emailed all of you last week. It was a little long, sorry for the verbose email, but my name is Megan Morales. I'm a seven-year resident of New Canaan. I have three kids in the public school system here. I emailed you last week in anticipation of this meeting, so tonight I'm simply here to reiterate my request to you. To please show your support for the arts, specifically the performing arts and the community of New Canaan. By funding the much-needed renovations and upgrades to the Powerhouse Theater. It can be challenging to figure out where you fit in in this town if you don't play sports. But the theater welcomes all, so I'm asking you to please partner with the Powerhouse. Many thanks for your time and consideration to this very worthwhile cause. Oh, and buy tickets to see the shows.
Thank you Megan. Next up Tucker?
Is Ike Morales.
How are you Ike?
Hello.
Thanks for coming out. I pulled the mic closer to you.
Better? Hello, good evening. My name is Ike Morales. I'm currently 16 years old. I'm a sophomore at the New Canaan High School. And I've come here as a, as a theater, theater kid tonight. But theater has just been one of the defining moments of my life. The past few months in theater have changed it forever. Even though it is at the school, I recently got to meet with these wonderful people that work at the Powerhouse, and they really just do have the best interest at heart. And they, they put on, all the people that are there are amazingly talented and. They, they just want to put on a show and. But yeah, it, it's, it just struck me as an amazing place and one that just needs some help, so I mean, I'm a Boy Scout, as some may know, but. It's just struck me as such a wonderful place that I'm planning to do my Eagle project there at some point in the near future. I'm working, I'm planning that right now, but. It, it's just a place that. Needs some love and I think genuinely deserves it and would do some really good stuff with it.
Thanks Ike, thank you very much.
Good evening.
Hello.
Zuhair Sweden, live in New Canaan since 1985. Town Players has always been a very, very special, special for me and my wife, for our family. We've been a longtime annual members for a long, long time. The place, as you know, goes back to the 1940s in terms of its history. And you know, the names that come to mind, if you look it up, Bob Dixon, Gordon Ellison, Tony Bickley. His picture is in the lobby of the Town Players. And his daughters, Tanya Bickley and Sheri Dean have been key members. Foundational members of the Town Players ever since I've been involved in it. In fact, Sheri, he got me into co-directing, co-producing a, a play with her. I even performed for 10 minutes once. Alright, so back in the, when, when we moved into the. Powerhouse, we have people in here who've been with it from day one. Steven and Andy Gravino, Gravino, Gravino. Tom Butterworth, Tom, you are on the.
He's there.
Video with us in here. You've been an active member with the Town Players. Bob Doran, I trust everybody would know him. So the point here, this is a community. That it programmed, it has everybody's fingers in it. Now, we have some new blood in, with the Town Players. I think we suffered quite a bit when Sheri moved out of town, Sheri Dean. But we have new blood in it. We have Debbie Burke, Sheila Turner, Patricia, sitting right next to me here, Joel Reynolds. Basically with the new blood, we're getting a new dynamism, and I think COVID kinda hurt us for a couple of years. We're getting upgraded marketing programs with it. We have, for example, the joint promotion with dining in town before you go to a play. We have activities that are partnership with. The, the Carriage Barn, thank you. We have some musical offerings that are being put together, so there are a lot of activity that's happening with it. I consider the Town Players a gem in this town. It's one of the key gems in the crown, if you will, of the town of New Canaan. When we moved in here in 1985, the real estate lady that showed us around was Nina Brown, the mother of Timber, of, that we all know in town here. She did not show us any houses before she took us around and showed us the nature center. She took us to Waveney. She showed us the Town Players and so on. She sold us on the town before she had us getting shocked with the prices of property in town. So my point here is, you know, the, the selling proposition, I think, for the Town Players is where else can you see? A well-done community theater play in a very friendly environment, minutes from home, for the cost of the train ride into the city and back. Okay, only at the Town Players of New Canaan. So I think it's a great investment for the town, and I recommend that you fully support it, whatever funding is requested.
Thank you. John Angle, never.
Sounds familiar.
I guess I am unlikely. Up here.
The two minutes is the challenge.
I know you want to wrap this up by nine, and that means we got eight minutes. John Angle, 431 Greenlee Road. I've been here since 1980, and I was in high school when Mrs. Grabro was my English teacher, and she was beginning work on the, on the Powerhouse Theater. You hear a lot of passion from these people about why to support the theater. I don't come from the theater. I come from the Town Council perspective, and I ask myself two questions, so I can do this in two minutes. Is this a good project compared to other projects, and why now? I think it's a good project because you have that 50/50 commitment on the funding. You've got a group of people who are willing to put their private money right up against the public money, so you know you have the enthusiasm when they're willing to put their own money up against it. Mostly, I look at this as a Waveney project. It makes the park better. The park, as you've said so many times, is our crown jewel. We think nothing of spending three and a half million dollars on a roof for the big, for the big.
Two million. Don't exaggerate.
Got that down for two? Tiger, you didn't spend three when we were all done?
That was the high school roof.
Okay. But I look at this as a, as a piece of the Waveney puzzle. I, I see it's a shovel-ready project. It's an investment in Waveney Park. It respects the old buildings, but making them more useful, which has been a recurring theme for the last five years. How do we make our old buildings useful, and how do we put this, this investment in that we've been kicking the can since 1982 on this particular project? So why now? Because, because momentum is a very fragile thing, and I think if we kick this can down the road. And do it, you know, in two years, five years, then this group won't be here, and they will just have lost steam. I mean, this particular project was, was, has been proposed in the 80s and in the 90s. And only now is it coming, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't kick it 10 years down one more time. Mainly because that momentum is a fragile thing. I think it's really important. You've already heard the economic driver arguments and the broad appeal, and it's affordable, and it appeals to our seniors. I remember Michael Chen talking about when he was asking for paddle court money, and he says, "We think nothing of investing in our youth in our sports fields." But when it comes time to invest in our seniors and their activities, we're a little slower to spend, so that occurred to me. So I've never really known much about this Powerhouse Theater, so I went to opening night two weeks ago to check it out, to check out the experience, to check out the facility. And I have to say, I was convinced a couple of weeks ago that this is a good project, and you should do it now. Thanks.
Thank you John. Seriously, thank you for everything you've done. We miss you baby. I miss you. I miss you more than you know.
Throw Michael Chen under the bus.
I love John too.
Take it a beating. You'll never miss another meeting.
Keith Ritchie out there?
Yep. You're muted Keith.
Yes, good evening everyone. My name is Keith Ritchie. I live on 183 Soundview Lane. I've been a regular attendee of performances at the Powerhouse Theater for 20 or 30 years. And I'm just here to say. That looking at the proposed project, there's really two things. Enlarging the lobby and bringing the bathrooms into ADA compliance. Frankly, it's amazing that the Powerhouse has done as well as it has over these years, considering how cramped and small the lobby is and the tiny bathrooms. All, all that's being proposed here is, is creating a lobby which will, which will be suitable to the rest of the theater. And creating bathrooms which are ADA compliant. And so I don't see how anyone can dispute the need for these and that this is a wonderful plan. So the only question is, does the town put up their 50%? For all the reasons others have talked about, I am hoping that the town will. I think it's a bargain. The town ends up owning the building with larger lobby. The town ends up owning the ADA compliant bathrooms. But everyone in the community gets to enjoy the better facility. Thank you.
Thank you Keith.
I don't see any other hands up. Is there somebody out there that has not raised their hand that wants to speak? None, you're good to go.
Great, thank you. Alright.
Tucker, can I share?
Patricia, so you're, we'll go to you next, and you've got screen to share there?
Okay.
And I think most of us have seen. As a Board of.
So here's, this isn't, I don't know, we did everything we could to get ready except actually sharing the screen, because we couldn't try this beforehand, so.
That's right, take your time. Technology is always challenging. So the Board of Finance had, have you had a full presentation with the model and everything? Okay, so we've had it as well, right? So we'll walk through.
So we, this is what we planned to do. It's not letting me do it. Okay, so I'm gonna try Plan B.
Tucker, you want to see if you can?
Yeah.
It's hard to do under pressure.
Oh, you're not up there? It's, I don't know, it's the security thing. It's a security thing, so I don't know. Plan B is running. Just give me 30 seconds, and then I'll talk. I can't.
Are you into the? Our guest now? I want to welcome, I see Kathleen Corbett out there. Hello Kathleen.
You're trying to share this PowerPoint here?
Would it help if more of us just asked questions about what you were doing? You're on guest now, what kind of?
That's what we need improv. There you go. Yeah, come on. They're, they're very good at improv down there. Very good.
Do you have it Tucker? Can you get the presentation?
Yeah. Okay, there we go. Maybe somebody can talk about the show. Give it a little plug.
I was the director of Hey Fever. We had a fantastic run, fantastic cast, the set built by Bill Reynolds. I designed the, the decorating and the costumes.
Can you do it from yours?
I don't have the document.
Lost our entire last weekend.
Got your email?
And our next show is, next main stage show is going to be in June. It's Moonlight and Magnolias. It's all about 1939 and the rewriting of the script for Gone With the Wind. That all takes place in one week, and these guys don't, they're not able to go home for this entire week of rewriting the script. And it's all, and there's bananas in it.
Well, now we're going.
You should plug the acting class as well.
Keep going, keep going, keep going. I'm gonna do something else, I'm sorry.
I also have an acting class.
Excellent.
Acting, it was excellent.
It was excellent.
There you go. And I just signed up a new member, yes, just tonight, so. Anyone is interested in acting for the first time or whatever, even just if people who haven't been on the stage.
We're going backwards.
Classes.
A lot of fun.
Improv classes. We have playwriting classes, and I have a new music series going up in March and May 21st. Highlighting local singer-songwriters. One of them's coming in is from a, who came to high school, she's a student that was there, graduated a couple of years ago. And went on to Berklee School of Music and a summer.
Alright, thank you everybody. I know it's been a really long night. I appreciate you joint, having a joint meeting to give us the opportunity to talk. You all know I'm Patricia Spigani. We're gonna make this as quick as possible, but we're really here to answer your questions. And I thank all my colleagues who, friends of the theater who came to speak tonight. So I'm gonna do a really brief introduction. Rose Long from the Architectural Preservation Studio is going to speak, and then I'm gonna give a really brief, we're gonna be really quick. We're gonna give a brief update of the theater, and then we're gonna talk about what we are asking the town for. Okay, so Rose, can you hear us okay? You're good. I hope this is all working alright.
You have a mic right there. This'll pick it up.
And if you want to see what you're doing, you can just go through that one.
Okay, alright.
You got paper, we're good, alright.
We're good. We're ready to go. Okay, we want to thank the Town Council and the Board of Finance for this opportunity to review the process of this project. As with any process, there are many factors being incorporated simultaneously, resulting in much back and forth input, processing, and problem solving. We will be happy to answer any questions following the presentation, which we intend to make as concise and brief as possible. Next. It is with any project, one of the first steps is to take a good overall look at the building or buildings and the context. This is one I think everyone in New Canaan is familiar with, but it is always beneficial to take a fresh look. The Powerhouse Performing Arts Center is located in the former Powerhouse and Greenhouse Complex at Waveney Park in New Canaan. It is centered between the Carriage Barn Art Center and the Wald Garden, which is maintained by the New Canaan Garden Club. Here are some overall views of what the team is envisioning as a performing arts campus, and indeed has the potential of becoming an arts campus with the Carriage Barn Art Center. Next. A larger perspective is how this campus fits within the overall view of Waveney Park. In this, you will see that these are some aerial views from way back when. I believe they, they were in the Olmsted Archives and as a PDA. The, tomorrow is Frederick Law Olmsted's 200th birthday anniversary, and this is being celebrated nationwide, and I believe there are several organizations here in town which are actually getting involved in this. So we reviewed how Waveney and specifically the Powerhouse Complex has evolved over the years. Next. The Powerhouse Complex itself has been altered a number of times over the years. It was built during Thomas Hall's ownership, which began in 1895, and which included a windmill tower, the base of which is all that remains. We felt it was important to review and understand that evolution for aesthetic and structural reasons. Next. We looked at the Powerhouse as it exists today, but also reviewed images of some of the structures and elements which have been removed or altered. For inspiration and understanding of structure and aesthetics. Looking closely and documenting the existing elements gave us direction for the shapes, materials, and structure that would be appropriate. Various factors which have inspired our team are elements both present on the property, as in the Carriage Barn next door structure. And envisioned by the team guided by the expertise of our structural engineers whose specialty is timber frame structures. As with any project, there is a program based on the current needs of the owner and user. In this case, the owner is the town of New Canaan, and the user since 1983 is the Town Players of New Canaan. The program for the Powerhouse Project has two primary parts. One, the owner, the town of New Canaan, is working to provide ADA compliant toilets in every public town-owned building. Currently, the existing toilets in the Powerhouse Theater are non-ADA compliant. The existing toilets are cramped, and the location results in undesirable traffic flow. After many attempts by previous architects and our team. After many attempts by previous architects and our team, it has been determined that the current location of existing toilets does not allow for enlargements to provide ADA compliance. Two is the user, the town players of New Canaan need a larger, more usable lobby space. Currently, the lobby area is five hundred and forty square feet, being only eight feet wide in half of the lobby. Current theater, theater seating capacity is a hundred and fifteen, which means there's only about four point seven square feet per person. Which is far below the generally accepted six square feet per person. The lobby for such a capacity should be a minimum of seven hundred square feet. The lobby expansion as proposed provides a minimum of one thousand square feet combined lobby space. Concerning the ADA toilets, images one and two show the original nineteen eighties plan and rendering by Dick Bergman. At that point, there was no handicapped toilet requirement. A greenhouse which partially enclosed the concrete patio was included in this plan to provide additional lobby area. This enclosure was never constructed and did not include enclosing the area in front of the office entrance. Image three shows a twenty-twenty concept by another architect who realized there was no way to get handicapped access to the existing toilets and recommended placing separate additional ADA compliant toilets in half of the existing office area. This required enclosed interior access from what is currently the patio area. Image four shows that based upon these previous plans and our own assessments. APS has recommended relocating all the Powerhouse Theater toilets, including ADA compliant facilities to the current office space. This will require that the entire patio area be enclosed to provide interior access to the toilets. Based upon the needs and programming and our assessment of the existing context, site and architecture. Our goals throughout this process and our resolution incorporate solving the needs and providing the required programming. ADA compliant toilets and expanded lobby. Working with the existing architecture, reflecting the original purpose of the complex. Incorporating original and existing materials in the proposed design. These existing and proposed images illustrate the proposed lobby expansion and campus concepts. At the same time that the ADA Powerhouse toilets and lobby expansion was being pursued. It was proposed that public toilets be provided in the area of Waveney Park near the Powerhouse. It was suggested that the potting shed be repurposed for this use. APS was engaged by the town to review the two proposed projects. ADA toilets and lobby expansion of the Powerhouse and the lobby, the Waveney Public Toilets. To determine if there was a cohesive solution. APS reviewed the needs and programming for both projects, examined the town players' expanded programming. And assessed the Powerhouse Campus. It was determined through this process that the potting shed would be better suited to house an educational space for the town players theater arts program. After review of the layout of the Powerhouse Campus, it was determined that citing the public toilets as an extension of the Powerhouse Annex would frame and complete the campus and would be better suited for connection to utilities. APS measured and surveyed the potting shed and has developed floor plans and elevations of the existing structure in preparation for restoration, rehabilitation and adaptive reuse. Excellent. The site plan illustrates the composed, the proposed components of the two projects combined to create a cohesive and interactive campus. I don't know if you wanna, can you point out the individual elements or can everybody see them? Yeah, so show where the toilets are in the, the new proposed toilets are right there. In what now is the office area and that will open out onto what is now the patio. Which will be the enclosed enlarged lobby area. And that will open out into what is now the rest of the courtyard there. And the potting shed, which is in the corner of this complex, is there. And then behind it is where we suggest placing the public ADA toilets, the park toilets. So that all of this will be framed and enclosed and enhance the courtyard area. Okay, next. APS has engaged DiStefano and Chamberlain structural engineers to work with the team to develop the structure for the expanded lobby. DiStefano and Chamberlain are experts in a variety of timber frame construction projects and have worked with the town of New Canaan on several projects in the past and currently. DiStefano and Chamberlain will also be consulting on the restoration of the potting shed. APS measured and surveyed the Powerhouse, the Annex and surrounding site elements. And has developed floor plans and elevations of the existing structure. Next. APS has also developed and continues to develop schematics of both the layout, the structure and the ultimate overall visual appearance of the Powerhouse and the Powerhouse Campus as a whole. APS and the entire team, thank you all for your time and your interest in these very exciting and important projects. Which will greatly benefit the New Canaan community. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're gonna switch gears. So we just heard about the buildings. So now we're gonna talk about how we're using the theater and how we plan to use it. And I need to give a little bit of a macro view. See how this works. So you heard from some of the John Hastings and some of the others on the benefits. I didn't see what it said, Tucker. Well. Okay, so. It's just slow. Okay, that's fine. Yeah, I don't know if this is gonna be, so what I wanted to do is just give you a little bit of review of what else is going on in Fairfield County relative to the arts. Many of you are probably familiar with the Ridgefield House and the work that they do there as a nonprofit. Ridgefield actually has an arts council, the Ridgefield Arts Council that was founded in nineteen ninety-seven. And they have twenty members that actually are part of the town organizations. So it's another group. Stanford, their arts council, Arts and Culture Commission was founded in nineteen ninety. Norwalk's Art Commission was founded in twenty seventeen. Greenwich Arts Commission in nineteen seventy-three and Westport in nineteen ninety-four. So the towns around us all have arts councils, culture and arts councils. And one of the things that we've talked about, several of us members in town, is the need to do such a thing here. And we think the Powerhouse, along with the Carriage Barn Art Center in Waveney, should be the cornerstone of that group formed behalf of the town. There's many nonprofits in town that support arts and culture, but I think it's time that we get together and form a group that, you know, comes before all of you and we can have a good conversation about the value of arts in town. So I think, you know, this also supports what we're trying to do. As you've heard, this is our seventy-sixth season, the town players of New Canaan. We've been almost forty years, next year in twenty twenty-three will be our fortieth year. Steve and Andy Gravero who are here, they opened the Powerhouse in nineteen eighty-three. Andy, Andy sang Bless This House. I'd love for her to do it next year and open up the new lobby once again. Our mission, we have a mission statement, I would like to read that. Town Players is dedicated to provide a home for live theater that enriches our community, creates an opportunity for artistic expression and is accessible to all. So we wrote that before this whole discussion on ADA bathrooms, right? We believe that accessibility is important. And that doesn't mean just people who might have a wheelchair. It means people of diverse backgrounds, of diverse ages, of diverse needs. We're in the process of putting in a loop system for people who have hearing aids. We're doing a lot of things that we think is really important. Having the improv class is really good because we're bringing different people to the theater than we would otherwise had. Our typical season for the last forty years has been five main stage productions. They each bring four hundred about visitors depending when we have sold out shows, we can hit nearly six hundred people that come into the theater. Deborah told you, we, we gave up due to this wonderful pandemic about five or six thousand dollars of revenue by losing this last weekend. Not, which is in a number, but it's all the people who wanted to come and enjoy our experience. Part of the accessibility is also making the theater affordable. You know, we kind of joke about this being an off-off Broadway theater. But the seats for seniors and students are twenty-five dollars, adults are thirty dollars. You don't have to, that's the, as Zohair said, it's the cost of a parking, less than the cost of parking in New York City. So that's what our, our theater has been about. So what are we doing now? We have over a hundred kids who have come back to our theater this, this year. From Mr. Hastings' kids to the Open Lawrence Alliance, you're gonna see flags in Waveney Park this weekend. Cinderella is going to be there with fifty kids on stage doing six productions over this weekend. It's gonna be amazing. We're really proud about that. They're coming back and doing a summer stage workshop for three weeks this summer. We've got two other folks coming in and doing another couple of workshops, kind of character workshops. It's really important to get kids out of their shells and away from their screens. We've got volunteers, you met Ike, well, there's ten, twelve other people like Ike, students that have come and knocked on our doors and said, we want hands-on experience. We don't get that opportunity to be involved in the stagecraft, particularly with lighting, which you all know is my thing. The, most of the schools bring in professional lighting designers. I'm happy to turn over everything to the kids and show them what I know and let them run with it. So I'm not at the rehearsal, the tech rehearsal tonight for Cinderella. There's three high school kids in there and they're doing the light cues and I'm thrilled. It's just have fun, go make it work. The other thing we've got, we've got a student from SUNY Purchase who's gonna come and be an intern with us this summer for a credit, which is great. She was on stage at the theater, she was part of earlier workshops that we did for students and she pursued a career in theater. If you've seen Rocket Girl, any of you saw Rocket Girl or saw Hay Fever, you know Sally Rose Zucker. She grew up in the theater, she grew up in this community, she's now teaching at Saint Luke, she's got a Masters of Fine Arts in Chicago. She couldn't be here tonight because she is one of the actresses that tested positive. And she's got a letter in your inbox that you might not have seen yet. But we're part of this community, she's come back, she's on our theater stage again. And we're looking forward to more shows with Sally Rose because she's amazing. So aside from theater, what are we doing? Deborah, who stood up, she's got, she's a magnet for talent. We've got musicians that are coming in May twenty-ninth to be on our stage. You might know Wheezy Reed, her son is a music producer. His daughter and a friend of hers are now professional museum, musicians. One of who attended New Canaan High School, they live in Vermont, perform in Vermont. They're coming to the Powerhouse Theater at the end of May. So we're gonna have hometown kids coming back on, on our stage, we're thrilled with that. We also know doing the workshop, she talked about that. Okay, so I like to say, we are bursting at the seams. We do not have the capacity, the physical capacity at the Powerhouse to do what we want to do. So with Rose and Carl and their engineers, we think we've got an awesome, awesome, awesome plan. And so we've all been through some of the numbers, Joel, it's time.
You don't trust me with much.
So how did we do? We didn't do too bad.
Totally fine.
So, so yes, here's the thing, I really want you to have this. We've got two pages that talk to what I think are the decisions that across Board of Selectmen, Town Council and Board of Finance have been made and need to be made. And then another page that summarizes the financials. And before we get into that detail. I'd love to take questions about the programs, the building, the design, the architecture. The intent that we have. Before we start talking about money, there should be enough, there's two pages for everybody. Should be enough copies, but.
I have one extra.
I can share, those two pages? Oh shoot. Share, bring it down there.
Do we have enough? There's two pages, one says Powerhouse Campus at Waveney, well, they both say that. One with two tables and one with one table. Okay, but I ask you before we start looking at the numbers, which is why I didn't pass them out. Any questions on the scope or intent? Right, I know there's always a question about how are buildings used in town. I hope we've convinced you, this building has been used since it opened up, it was abandoned. We want to make the shed theater as active as the Powerhouse has been. So I will pause, is there any questions before we talk about numbers or decisions?
Any questions on the physical plant at the? Maria?
The, the current potting shed, which you're talking about being the shed theater.
Yes.
Am I correct, is it stone now? You know, you're talking about stuck going it?
We're not stuck going it.
Okay.
But is it stone? Or stone, I believe in one wall is frame construction, but the foundation is stone.
So like the facing of it will be stone?
It will look exactly like it does.
Good question, because some of the pictures aren't real clear, so good question.
That new classroom space is, is it, did I see four hundred square feet? That's the classroom you want to renovate?
That's the potting shed.
That's, yeah, that, that'll be the classroom space.
It'll be, I would say, an alternate performance rehearsal space. So we, we were talking actually with Ike, he's starting a jazz trio. Wouldn't it be a nice thing to say to the kids in town? You want to perform somewhere, you've got your own little cafe space, you can come and perform and we'll have folding chair. It'll be very informal, but we want to have a place that can be really used. And it can be used for classrooms, so Mr. Hastings won't have to have his kids in the storage room when we've got something going on on the stage.
That's, I was wondering how many classes can you, now you can add more classes if you have, yeah. Like the adult improv. Yeah, young.
Patricia, this, this may be a question for Rose, but the HVAC in the potting shed, is there any, is it non-heated? Is it heated? How, how, how is that being handled?
It's empty.
So it's just electricity and that's it?
There's no, there's nothing.
So we're not putting power in there, oh, power, no, but I'm asking, so there will be HVAC in there?
We do not plan to put water to it.
So in terms of the, the compressors and unit, where, you won't see that from driving by or what do you think, where are the locations?
We'll do our best to, yes.
Try to hide it somewhere in there, so more courtyard side probably then. Okay, good, Amy.
Either ADA compliant issues that you will be incorporating in the potting shed slash shed theater to be, I mean, I'm assuming the doorways will be wide enough, it'll be ramping, there's, and you, I, I just want, if something is done. We're not gonna hear three years from now, oh, we gotta make it ADA compliant.
No, it has to be, has to be.
Okay, and so the facilities and the bathrooms are all can be used elsewhere.
There's no point in doing anything without.
Anybody else building questions?
So having renovated every house I've ever lived in. But not taken on something like this, I would say that, and I look to Tiger as well. But I would say that if we can do the project as a campus, it has to be more efficient. There's one, one bid, one builder. Disruption to the park over one period of time, that just seems like that would be a better plan.
We have the ability to use the theater even when this is all going on, because we have another entrance and deck on the side adjacent to the.
Right, that's a good point. So we won't have to close the theater. And since we're. And since we're putting the, the lobby and the ADA bathrooms on the other side of the building, so to speak, actually can use the entire theater while this is going on, so we won't lose use for that period of time.
Question, do, do you have the bids? I mean, where these are, so these, what are these estimates from?
Yes. Estimates are based on what the program is and what the materials are that we think we're going to need, based on estimating construction projects the last forty years.
So double it. How long is the project going to take and you said that there's not going to be any downtime for the theater because of the access and the entryways?
Right.
It's great, I mean, typically in any project, you have to shut things down, but if you can keep it open, that's, that's excellent.
That will definitely help us from a production, because as Mr. Engel said, we don't want to lose momentum. We've had enough challenge with COVID, we don't, you know, we, we don't want to stop.
I think it's a great project and I think John Point, he said it enhances the crown jewel of New Canaan, I think it's an excellent project.
Anybody else building questions? One, one of the things that came up during our introduction in the model was the roof line, and I think you guys have redesigned that because we were concerned about that coming in, so you want to just talk about that for a sec?
Well, we, we had the roof kind of going higher. The peak, when you look at the building, there's a big peak, you know, the south elevation, there's a big peak, there's a big window, right? So we had it kind of up above that to kind of avoid having to deal with, you know, too many problematic issues. We're tucking it under the overhang there. She's got it up there. And now we're, we're lowering it to also deal with the drainage issue that, because we've got several, there are a bunch of different roofs coming in here. So we're bringing it down so that the water can come drain and then we're going to build basically a very large cricket to bring it all down. In one.
Great. And this all has to go through P and Z anyway, right? I mean, it's that, we'll stay out of that lane. Questions? Anybody else? Oh, Robin?
I just had a question, with the two fifty split town and the players would.
Do you want to go to the numbers now? Because I actually would like to kind of present the numbers. I think, it, it requires a story, if, if you bear with me.
Sure, is there?
Steve, could I just ask a question before we leave the structure?
Go ahead, Tom.
So Patricia, what, what, what I think everybody should be cognizant of, of is what's the alternative to extending the lobby? In other words, the town has decided to put in ADA compliant bathrooms. If we were to do that without the lobby extension, how would that work?
Well, Tom, as, as I, I said, the previous architects have looked at this and they, what they did was they split up the toilet. And they put just the ADA part in where the office is, so they were taking away half the office and putting the, you know, men's and women's ADA compliant there. That actually is in violation of the ADA requirements that it be equal. Everybody goes in the front door, everybody goes in the same place, so that's actually not an appropriate solution. And you, you cannot, you absolutely positively cannot provide ADA toilets where they are now. So the solution is to bring everything into the one space, into the office space. But then, are you going to go outside to go to the toilet? So you need to enclose the space right outside of there. So basically, this is going to make one large sort of combined lobby. I don't know if that answers your question, but that's, that's how we're.
The question is, is that, I mean, look at it this way, the town players has been performing in this space for over forty years. And in theory, if, if we didn't make it more aesthetically pleasing or provide more space for audience members in, in the intermission, et cetera, if we were to just leave it alone, it could probably go on for another ten, fifteen years. I'm not proposing that, but I think people should appreciate, is there a way to just leave it alone? Or is it, does it necessarily follow that if we make this building ADA compliant, we're, we're going to have to brutalize the space? We're going to just introduce unsolvable problems, is that correct?
So, Tom, thanks for your question. The, the first, the town didn't decide to make, to put any DA bathrooms, it's a law, all right, it's thirty-two years coming. And we've been trying to solve this problem for two years, I think, or more, as to what we should do and how to do it. And you are right, the brutalized statement is probably your best statement, right? Because looking at it from the standpoint, if we went through several designs on how to get ADA compliant bathrooms in there and not affect the powerhouse operations, right, not affect the lobby, not affect the office, not affect anything that was going on there, we can't do it. Like, literally, it's very difficult for us to go in, something's going to have to break at that point in time. So the thought is, what Rose's, to Rose's point is, you either lose the office, right, or you lose the lobby, or you lose a portion thereof of both, right? And you make the spaces that they already have, that have already been spoken about being constrained even more so. And if you lost the, the office space and you forced them to go upstairs, you have a problem with fire access and safety. And the fact that the staircase to go upstairs, I wouldn't want to put anyone in an office space upstairs in the powerhouse. So that was our, the, that would cause us to kind of take it back, you take, step back and say, we need to do something more, and then come forward with the overall plan that they've wanted to do for the past forty years, which is to expand the lobby. You almost need to expand the lobby and expand the space in order to get the bathrooms in that are required after thirty-two years of non-compliance with the law. So in essence, you know, we're looking at is it's a, it's a save almost by the, by the town players and the fact that they're willing to come forward and give us half the money that we need to go and do this work, because we have, we either, we have to put the bathrooms in, we have to put them somewhere, they have to be inside the structure. This is where we're at. So I, brutalize is a great word, I didn't, you know, I, I would never thought of that myself, but yes. But it's not thirty-two years of non-compliance, the law was adopted nineteen ninety-one, we had a grace period for like twenty years, but at a cer- at a certain point, we have no grace period, so. We have no grace period anymore.
Sorry, I've asked you just why, I just want to try to get my hand up, my arm around this, because, and I completely get we want to make it successful. Does, do the bathrooms have to be inside? Can they not be connected? Because we're going to have, we just, we did ADAs at the carriage barn, we're going to do ADA for the theater that is, you know, used at night. For sure, I mean, people are there all the time, but in terms of, it's not a humongous amount of use for those ADA bathrooms. And then we're proposing, put another set right there. And that's where I just struggled, like, I, I certainly want people to have access, but it's like, it's like, seems so duplicative. And, and in terms of the amount of use.
To a degree, yes, but the, the problem that you have is we can't ask people to come outside to go utilize the facilities in essence.
It has to, my question is by law.
For the, for the structure itself, the, they would have to be inside, they'd have to be, you know, as part of that building itself. Can't necessarily build it and then not have use.
What was the other issue that the public bathrooms on the shed theater? You, you needed to have, once those came into play, the point was, you wouldn't, you wouldn't necessarily have so many hours of availability in the powerhouse. Would be closed, you would, it's not available, it's not accessible for a good reason, right, you think it'd be locked up and so forth.
That's the problem that we have.
That was the issue.
Yeah, we couldn't ask the, the town players to keep the powerhouse open.
For the, without.
Public people there to make sure, it's the same problem we have with the carriage barn.
Of course.
We have, now we have ADA accessible bathrooms at the carriage barn and the exact same problem, you have to go into the building to get to them, we can't ask them to stay open so we can have outdoor bathrooms. But you're right, the public bathrooms are optional, we, we do have other public bathrooms, it would be more convenient to have more, because otherwise people search around, they'll try to get into Wavine House. There's a lot of use of the park now.
You know, I mean, I, I'm all for the, I'm just, it's just, it's just like, it seems like.
Seems a little.
Right, all in, all in one spot. And, and in terms of the, the, I'm trying, I, I know this is sketched out, but the visual, what would this additional public bathroom look like? Because, you know, when we was going to go in the potting shed, it was kind of a cool building, right? You know, it's like stone and all that stuff, so is it just going to be, it's not going to look like the ones we have currently, right?
No, no, the ones that are in the center of the, 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 no, those, no, it doesn't. It in essence, what, what Rose and Carl designed is just basically an extension of, uh, the, the, the annex theoretically, right? So it's just an extension, it would look very similar or look exactly the same as step-down roofline, but other than that, looks the exact same as what's adjacent to it. So that's the, the prop area and the costume area. Yeah. So, that, so that's what you're, you're looking at, if you can see it up on the screen, that green, the smaller green roofed area, and then what that does is then, as Rose mentioned, it squares off the entire campus and then creates a nice patio area and a nice courtyard area in the middle that will then be completely accessible to all three facilities. The, the annex bathrooms, the potting shed itself and the, and the, uh, the theater. We'll all share that one courtyard and then share the access.
And, and I know we, this kind of all triggered off of the fact that we looked at the potting shed to, to put the bathrooms in. So then the question I have, is this the right spot in Waviney for an additional set of public bathrooms, just because it's kind of a little off. You know, and, and maybe, maybe it makes sense because of plumbing and stuff, but I just, I just think it's like, just a lot of.
The, if you look at it from, you know, equidistant, so to speak, you know, equidistant between here, between the ones that are in the center, the ones that are now that, that we have access to at Spencer's Run, you know, since you can get to Spencer's Run, you can use the outdoor bathroom to Spencer's Run. Or then Lapping Community, you kind of see where, you know, they are for, especially for the elderly, they're, they're equidistant throughout the park. Rose mentioned the plumbing, that is, that is a factor, right? The fact that if we wanted to put another standalone building somewhere in Waviney, where would we put it? If it was just going to be bathrooms, it'd be very, very difficult to place it where it wouldn't look awkward. And then the thought is that, you know, we've been trying to limit growth on the southern side of the, of the, of the road, right? The northern side of the road has sort of been dedicated towards athletic facilities and fields and, and playing things. And the southern side has been more to passive recreation, the sledding hills is about the most accurate recreation you have. And with the advent of that, and now the, the Jenny Amedo coming up onboard in the Anderson Pond, now you have a lot more draw for people to come to that area. We necessarily to give them facilities, if we tried to build them somewhere else, I'm going to have to carry all that facility down there and then build something there where I've already got it. So I'd be building septic fields, I'd be, you know, carrying, I'd be carrying water and power down there. I think it's, where we are is probably the best location for it. And it fits inside the campus as far as it doesn't necessarily look out of place in that regard, you know, where would we put one? I, I don't know where I would put one at present to say, and then have it fit and then have it look like it belonged there. Yeah.
Numbers? You want to walk through the numbers?
Okay. Right, so I'm going to stop sharing since, Tom Butterworth, I apologize that you don't have this.
I'll text him a picture of it.
I've got a version of it.
You do, but it, it looks a little bit different from what I shared with you previously, but.
You got three board finance members on as well.
I'm sorry, Todd.
There's three board of finance members on there as well.
Oh, but they didn't see either, yeah.
Okay, so.
Tucker, is that possible? Take a photograph of it and send.
Yeah, I just, I just.
I can send it to her.
Does she have a copy?
Steve just did.
I'll send it to Tom.
Thank you. Thank you, okay, so. So there's two, two things we're talking about, and actually, I'm going to look at this page first. That says, page nine in the bottom right-hand corner. So I've got the Board of Selectmen represented the Board of Finance and the Town Council. And I'm trying to make this the pieces of the puzzle that we talked about for the building. So the bathrooms are one A and one, one B and two B, so bathrooms, B for bathrooms, one B and two B are the bathrooms. And then the, the one is the public restrooms that we talked about. And two B are the bathrooms, the ADA bathrooms inside the theater. Two A is the lobby expansion and one A is the shed theater, so just so that we see what we're talking about. So from the powerhouse perspective or the, the different projects, the use of the potting shed is one of the questions that we have before all of you. What, when we met with the Board of Selectmen, Kevin, you and your colleagues approved that. And I'm just reading across here, the Board of Finance with Tiger's request approved two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for public bathrooms that we just talked about, but the location had to be agreed to.
Approved by the Town Council.
By the Town Council. So Town Council, you're here, one of the questions, maybe you're not ready to make that decision, but that is an open request, is how the location of the buildings and the use of the potting shed for the theater as a performing arts and educational space. So that's a question, Steve, whenever that's appropriate to come to, to question, but and that, we'll come back to that when we talk about the money. So then from the the actual lobby of the theater and the bathrooms of the theater, what we are requesting, as we've said before, is that we, we split the town and the town players split the funding for the building of the enhanced lobby and the bathrooms. So that's the other piece. And what we have been, I would say counseled, is that the fifty percent of that would come from ARPA. This is what, again, the Board of Selectmen had agreed to when we met with them. The fifty percent of, or two hundred and fifty thousand would come from the ARPA funds and another two hundred and fifty thousand would come at some point from the town budget. So that's the other piece of the equation. So as I understand it, where the finance approves and the Town Council approves use and spending. So that's, I needed to put this little sheet together so that I knew who was doing what for what purpose. So that helped me and hopefully it helps, I've got it straight and it clarifies for you.
I wish everybody would do that. I wish everybody would do that, makes it easy.
Right, it just, it just is a good checklist, so thank you. So now if we look at the sheet that's got the dollars on it, the whole project for everything on the campus, I like to think the whole number would have one point five million, plus or minus, right? The one point five million, so I'm looking at the left-hand side of this page, it just has the project costs and how it was broken out. So the public restrooms, the estimate was a hundred fifteen, hundred fifty thousand. The powerhouse bathrooms, which were approved in the twenty eighteen budget, I believe, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen budget, was about a hundred and ten thousand. I may not have that number exactly right, but that's the number that I've been using. So that the restroom component of the campus in total is the two sixty. Right, so then if we talk about the theater portion, it's the shed theater, which has two pieces, the town with your all support to Tiger in refurbishing the building, the shed building itself, the old potting shed with new roof and making it stable. I hope you caught the photograph that Rose had, you could see the building itself right now, doesn't have a floor, it's totally empty. Had a lot of water damage, so it needs help, so that portion would be a hundred thousand. And then once it's a solid building, then the town players would come in and outfit it. So we, you would give us a floor and we'd come in and do whatever we need to do inside to make it serviceable as a, a classroom and performance space. And it's some put, time put in theater lighting, right? So that's, that would get us a complete useful building. And having a building just after you leave it in good shape, we'll be able to use it as a classroom. We'll make sure it's got heat and the HVAC, right? And then we can continue to outfit it. So that then is two hundred thousand dollars for the shed theater. So then we talk about the lobby and the lobby all in about a million dollars to make that wonderful A-frame structure and wonderful, nice beams inside, all fitted out would be about a million dollars. So those are the, the basic numbers for the project. So then on the right side, since the bathrooms on the property and the campus have been funded, I'm not including that in my summary on the right side. I'm not including that in my summary on the right side, because you all have agreed to that already. So on the, the funding then on the, I looked at it in terms of town of New Canaan versus town players or TPNC. So the shed theater that we just talked about, there's from the town perspective, $100,000 responsibility, you've already approved that from the ARPA funds. If we look to the new town player's side, it's $100,000 of investment we need to make. And I will tell you that we have two donors that came forward and said, if the town approves that, they are willing to commit $60,000 so that we can then go raise the additional 40,000. But that $60,000 is conditional on specifically having the shed theater be given over for use as a part of the campus for the powerhouse. So we think that's really generous of our, our two donors. Right? But, but that's the condition. So if we left here tonight with that decision, I'd be really happy. We'd all be really happy. Um, so then if we talk about the, the lobby itself, again, that structure, we're asking the town to fund however it sees fit, half a million dollars. Town players of New Canaan would fund the, the other half a million. So if we look in the box at the bottom right of that page, just to give you a, a sense of obvious question you're going to ask is, can we raise the funds? You know, where are we against that? So to date, we have in our bank account, $202,000 allocated towards this project. Some of that is rainy day funds that have been set aside by our predecessors running the town players. We're very grateful for the hard work that folks have done, saving money from every show has been pretty much profitable for the last 40 years. Not everyone, but most of them. So they've, we've been very good stewards, not only at the building, but of our, our bank account. We have, along with that $200,000, we have in total assets and investments with the community foundation. Our total base is 350. So we're, we're healthy, we're a healthy organization. And we've earmarked 200,000 of that for this project. Think that still gives us a good base, but it also shows our commitment. So in a, and of that, uh, just in terms of our fundraising capability, 70,000 of that has been raised since July. And that's coming out of the pandemic, right? So that's, I think, a very healthy, 30,000 of that was from December. Now, we got a generous donation of $20,000 from a foundation that asked to remain anonymous, but that definitely helps. And then I already talked about the $60,000 that's been split, pledged specifically for the, the potting shed. And in addition, we have another $70,000 and out, two outstanding grants, one for $50,000 and another one for 20,000 from the community foundation. And they're anxiously both awaiting, um, support and endorsement from the town on supporting both from a funding and the, the concept that we have for expanding the theater arts in our community. So that's where we are. Um, it's very difficult. I'm, I'm responsible for the fundraising. It's very difficult to go out and ask individual donors for significant investments when I can't say that the town of New Canaan, who owns this building, um, isn't, you know, very excited about what we're trying to do. So I'm appealing, we are all appealing to each and every one of you to support us in this adventure, both from your heart and the town's, um, funds to make this possible. So hopefully I answered your questions.
Well, I just have a question about the money, probably because I'm brand new, so bear with me. What was approved and funded in the 2018 budget for the adding the ADA restrooms inside? What was the amount?
Around $100,000.
Okay, so that was, I'm sorry.
He has written about 110, it's around 100, 100K from what I remember.
So where it says town has already approved and funded new restrooms on.
Is both, yeah. So you have, you have two different sets there. So what you have is you have the, the hundred that was prior, when we started to go through this process of trying to fit bathrooms inside.
Yeah.
And then.
B, is that?
That's, that's, that is two B. Yeah, and then, and then what you have, the, the exterior, one B is the 150 mark.
Yes.
That was the ARPA funds if we were to take and build bathrooms at the annex and then do what we have to do as the landlord and, and refurbish the potting shed for other use, right? So the exterior and then the floor was estimated about 100, 110. And the bathrooms restimate about 150, our ARPA request was 250. Our, our budget at the time in our budget, um, our proposed budget was 250. I didn't want to change it to 260, make it all confusing, so I said we could probably work within the 250. And then it was decided that that would be funded out of ARPA funds. So to, to Patricia's point, the Board of Selectmen said, yes, you can use ARPA and you can use the potting shed. Board of Finance didn't necessarily have a dog in the fight. The Town Council said they wanted more information, right? So you approve the funding, but you, but the, the use of the building, the potting shed specifically was, was left for tonight or for another night, right?
So there's another 100 left over from that ARPA allocation.
150 and 100, yeah, to, you know, if you, if you, if you chose to go, if you chose to put the bathroom in the potting shed, it's 250. Because I gotta refurbish the building and then put the bathrooms in it. If it's a question of putting the bathroom someplace else and, and allowing the town players to utilize the potting shed, it's still 250, I, but I get the bathrooms and they get to use the potting shed.
So the, if you annex the.
If I annex the bathrooms, it's 150.
And then you can put the 100 towards refurbishing the.
Correct.
But separately, you're asking for an additional 250 of our funds.
Right, then you're getting into, now you're.
You got it.
Now you're getting into, you're getting good. So now you're getting into the lobby expansion whereby the 250 is for the lot, for the town's contribution to lobby expansion. Right? So yeah, so now you're boiling down into it and, you know, we're starting to get some clarity.
Sorry, I just wanna make sure.
Don't be sorry, all the light bulbs just went off, so.
I just wanna make sure I understand the buckets of.
So. I'm sorry, the numbers are all the same. It's like 250, 250, 250, it's very.
And just knowing what was funded when and where, where that, the, the funding is all coming from was helpful for me.
Good question. So Patricia, when you said 500 though, before you were talking about 250 for the lobby. And 250 for the bathrooms.
No.
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 No, she's talking, no, that 250 is not.
So forget it, bathrooms aside, hold the bath, bathrooms, you, you all as a town have already approved funding for bathrooms. Inside and the public bathrooms, what hasn't been decided on the bathrooms is where the public bathrooms go. So that's one, one number of 250,000 that you've already given Tiger for bathrooms. So now.
From ARPA.
That's correct.
So you have the 250, then we had the 110 from 2000, so we actually have 360 allocated to this whole campus for figuring out how to provide services.
Exactly.
Is additional 250, which so question.
Additional half million. So now I'm saying to get the lobby done, it's a million dollar project. To get the lobby done, it's a million dollar project. Not including the bathrooms. To get the lobby, the wonderful lobby, to access these wonderful new ADA bathrooms for the theater is a million dollar project. And the town players is funding, once we'll say, we'll fund a half a million and we're asking the town for another half a million. You can say where that money should come from, but when we met with Kevin, Nick and Kathleen, they suggested split it between that half a million from the town, split it between ARPA and Tiger's budget.
Just so you know, the, this request is 250 for ARPA. That's all we can move tonight.
Tonight, that's all I understand, that's correct.
The other 250.
Although subject to Mark saying it hasn't really gone to the committee.
Okay, good, good, I was gonna get to that.
That we're voting on tonight, is this, sorry, is this the original 250?
No. This is to, this is to go against the million dollars for the renovation of the lobby.
Right.
Thank you for asking the question. I'm sure you weren't the only ones.
Even on computers.
Yes, it's fine. It's for the renovation of the project, it's not the bathrooms, it's just, you've clarified, it's the lobby.
It's fine, the lobby. So it's to get this wonderful lobby that, again, is a town building so that we can finish this part of the campus off in a wonderful format.
So if, if this 250 was to move with ARPA, that, that's, that's setting you guys up to do your fundraising and that's committing the town to come up with another 250, correct? Correct?
Yes.
Capital budget for the year.
Yeah.
Right, right.
That's exactly what we have.
That was in your, that in your plan as a request?
Yeah.
We just gave, it was there. No, the selectmen, the selectmen offered that at the time. It was not in the budget at the time the selectmen offered it. I had 250 in for bathrooms. The 250 was removed and went to ARPA and replaced. And then the 250 that stayed by the Board of Selectmen said, that'll go towards the lobby expansion with an additional 250 from ARPA to make the town's contribution of 500 to match the town players at 500. That was how, how it transpired. So while I did have money in my budget originally, it was for a different allocation on the campus. Huh?
Do we keep that?
It was in there, yeah, yeah, it was in there. It was for the bathrooms itself. Hold on, you get, so, did you keep it? No. So what happened was the Board of Select, the Board of Finance then, after the Board of Selectmen approved the 250, 250, ARPA for the lobby, 250 for the, ARPA for lobby and 250 for bonded for the lobby, 500 in the town. It came to the, the Board of Finance and you said no at present, right? So you said, we're gonna wait on that. Not you, with the Board of Finance, I'm looking at you. So I'll look at the Scott.
Michael Shen voting against that. He have dropped off.
Right, so it was removed from the budget at present. That's why we can't do that. So, so we've got, we've got.
Yeah, I turned that down, Tiger.
Uh, Rita.
So hypothetically, if you, if, say you didn't get approval for this extra 250, what would you do? Like what? Because you have that other 250, I know, I know things are contingent, so what would you do?
That's a really good question. I think we will be at risk. I know Laura Dobbs was listening, I think we'll be at risk of getting the funding. Uh, you know, I think it talks to what John Engel said, it's about momentum.
Projects, like what would go forward, if anything?
So if it's.
I'm just, again, hypothetically, right, next year, or would, I, I don't know. If you got it, because you already have some money that was been approved, that, that could fund some things. I, I'm just curious, what would, what would you do?
So if it, you, you can't build part of a, part of a lobby.
Right.
Right? And it makes no sense to put the ADA bathrooms into the, into the, the office right off the courtyard, if there's no way to get access to them.
Yeah.
So it kind of all backs up.
So you wouldn't do anything? I guess that.
And then the town has a question about being in compliance from the bathroom's perspective.
Now, we have a stasis point for a moment. We have to then consider it at that point. What, what would be the options at that point? Haven't gotten that far, but they, they become more problematic to try to figure out what we would do at, at that point. We would be back, in essence, we would be back to what kind of brought us to this point, right? Which was, we'd be back to the point of, okay, how do we make the building compliant with the funds that we have, right? That would, that would be at that point. So, yeah, it's, it's an excellent question, but, right, we would be at a stasis point. If, if funds weren't available from other sources, we'd be at a stasis point. And then we would have to kind of consider what, what would be our options at present in order to then step back and make the building compliant from a, from an ADA perspective. Right? I, I don't, at present, I don't know, you know, I'd have to sit with Rose and Carl and see exactly what the options were, but they're, they're limited.
How much of the five, your 500's been raised?
So that's what we said, we've got, we have 200,000 towards that that's in the bank.
Okay.
And we have another 70,000 in grants that we're optimistic on.
So, well, Mark's got a question, and then we have Maria and Penny.
And Tom.
Uh, this is.
And Tom, okay.
This is probably a question for Tiger and Patricia, but i- i- if we left this meeting deciding the building use that, that's a start, right? Because that money's already been appropriated. That's a start, yeah. I mean, there was a question before about, you know, can you do it together? Can you do it separate? I have been asked that question prior, right? So you theoretically could divide them up into separate projects.
Right.
There is the, the synergy of being together in one with one contractor working on the site. There's definitely a cost savings to that, but you could theoretically split them, you know.
But at least knowing whether or not it's the potting shed or an annex of the existing building.
Could go forward and.
We need to, we, we as the town council needs, need to at least come to terms with that. Is that my understanding?
At some point, yeah, because I'm, like I said, I'm at a stasis point, right? Whereby you have to tell me where you want, where you would like those, um, public use, the exterior bathrooms when the potting shed is closed or when the, when the powerhouse closed, where would people utilize the facilities? So at that, at that point, that direction hasn't been.
Tiger, I'm not a bathroom guy, but where should we put them?
That's a terrible question. No, it's a great question. The, uh, it's a hard question for me. The, um.
No, honestly, we're.
To be, to be quite honest with you, the, uh, you know, the, um, in, going inside the building and making it that way was, was difficult, right? And then looking at the potting shed, one of the reasons why I asked, I'll step back, one of the reasons I asked players to then hire Rose and Carl, because we had already hired Rose and Carl, right? To take a look at the potting shed at the time, we gave me $40,000 last year to design it, right? And he had this problem inside about the bathrooms inside, we couldn't come up with an answer, right, for what we were gonna do. And they already had hired an architect that came back with plans that were lacking, about for a better word, right? We could do better. So at that point in time, I presented to the players, why don't we hire Rose and Carl to look at the campus as a unit, right? Just to look at the entire area and see what we come up with. I had no idea that they were gonna come back and say that we should be looking at the potting shed for different uses and put the bathrooms as an annex. Right? Because all was brought to me at the time was, use the, use the ba, use the potting shed for bathrooms. Sounds like a great idea, right? So at that point in time, when they looked at it holistically, that's when they came back with the idea, and that's when I said that, that fits. And that was one of the reasons why I asked them to step back was to take a look at the campus holistically, instead of siloing everything, right? Which we have a tendency to do, look at it holistically, give me a master plan for that area. And this is the plan that they came back with, the master plan for this area, and I think it fits for what, what we're trying to accomplish.
So Steve, I think before we leave tonight, we need to vote on that. I mean, I, I think in fairness to the fact that it's obviously money sitting there and it, it doesn't, it doesn't determine whether or not we all agree to move the, the rest of it forward. Penny.
I think we all need to also put on our finance hats as to what we are committing taxpayer money to be supporting. We have a police station at seventeen and a half. We still have other aspects of that project which have not yet been, um, formalized and presented to us. So the police project is going to be greater than seven, seventeen and a half. We have other projects that are on our list, not from an ARPA side, but from a town taxpayer side. And I just get nervous when we're committing taxpayer money to a non- town program. This is an independent 501(c)(3). Um, and so I'm, I'm, I'm just putting this idea that everybody really needs to be thinking about what we're committing our monies to.
That's a good point. Maria?
Can we see the diagram again of what the campus, not the photo, but the actual, like, yeah, so, so just because I'm trying to understand where the offices are. What I'm thinking about is what if the office is not in where the theater is? What if the office is in the potting shed? Does it have to be in there?
What if it gave you offices in Waveney House?
What, what do you want? The, the floor plan?
We don't have that on.
We don't have that on. Basically where it says new office is where the two toilets are now actually. The wall where the door is, is further back. So there are two toilets squeezed into that area right now.
Space now. So the, the office today is where Rose is showing the bathrooms. That's our office space today. So what we're planning to do is basically swap the two spaces on the same level.
I'll get it right home.
What, what use the office for?
Good question. We store all of our history. So we have seventy-five years of history. Including the original contract that was signed by the first selectman in nineteen eighty-three that gave us access to the, the powerhouse. We have scripts. We have a, a nice conference table that we meet when we have our own board meetings. We have ten people in our board. So we, um, we don't have payroll, but we certainly have bills to pay. So we have a computer there that our accountant uses. So.
And you use that as your office. We've got plenty of extra space.
We, we are this, and I appreciate the ideas. We are not really asking you to solve an, us, an office space problem. That's not what we're asking to solve. Cause we, we can accommodate the office in, in a good way. What we're asking to solve is space that's used by the public, whether, when they come to a performance. Because the space that's currently there for the lobby is, is just very small and constricted.
Yes, but if the, if the theater complex consists of the theater. Lavatories and a box office. That's for the theater portion of it is what you need on that particular. Posted stand space. The office is something that could be. You know, in a, in a building. Further into the campus, uh, into the wave in the campuses whole. And there you solve your problem with the toilets, because now you have that space where the office is used to. And you don't have to build the.
You, you have to get from the toilet, from the ADA toilets into the lobby. That's, that's what you haven't solved.
Right. 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 I mean, this is, I, and I know, um, it's, it's hard looking at these, but this is what Rose was saying, right? We took what's labeled here as the new office, which is our current bathrooms. And that space just really can't accommodate at all. Two bathrooms. I mean, it, it just doesn't physically work to meet the ADA compliant piece. So we're losing office space, which is really not anything that we're asking.
Okay. So what is it with the toilets and the potting shed and then your, your box theater where the office is?
Because we, am I allowed to speak? There's no access, there's no internal access then to ADA bathrooms for any patrons using the theater. There's no theater alive that requires their patrons, including older people with walkers, et cetera, to go outside. To go to a bathroom fifty feet away.
Does it not connect?
Doesn't, it doesn't connect.
I, I will tell you, it'd be impossible for my ninety-five year old mom walking with her walker to, to do that. Code issue. The, the other thing, um, Penny, if I, I can, your point, um, we are a five oh one C in town. And we, so we are nonprofit. But this is the town's building, right? This is a asset that you all have. We happen to be the stewards of it now. And I, I think we've been good stewards, giving good use, but this is a town building that we are wanting to improve. Yes, for the purpose of bringing good theater to the community, right? For, for all the things we started off talking about. But it, it, you know, the end of the day, it's a town building. It's going to remain a town building. And we just think that this is the right time, um, since we're gonna be disrupting that courtyard anyway. This is the right time and it's gonna solve all the, the, the needs that we have. Needs that the town sets for ADA compliance. Opportunity that we see for expanding arts and, and the theater and everything we talked about. And bringing just a good experience. Somebody, one of the questions from one of the, um. The grant. Folks that we talked to asked, do we have a, a business case for expanding our revenue? Well, one of the things that we could do, right? And, and I talked about offering the space to kids to come in. I'm not gonna charge kids to come in and use the theater. But the way it is now, we can't really use it for rental because it's really just, it's not, it's not up to snuff. But if we can make these improvements, then we have the opportunity to use this for so many more performing arts spaces. We talked to the, the gentleman that runs the, um, the dance academy in town. He needs a recital space for his kids. When before they go to compete. We could do that, right? But we, we, we just don't have the space to, to be able to do it now.
So, so, um, we've got Tom out there with a question. He was in line. So. All right. So Penny, you respond while Tucker, can you get Tom back up on?
To respond to it, you know, the, the town actually owns multiple buildings, like fifty-seven of them, right? A number of them have, uh, other organizations residing in it. And like the Carriage Barn, we maintain the outside of the building. We don't maintain the insider or anything programmatic. And the same with the, with the nature center, a number of their buildings. So, um, that, that was just my point is that we. We have to consider how we support organizations that are not town functions. Is all my point.
Okay, fair enough.
But at the end of the day, we own, we own the building. So, you know, we have to take care of it. And we're agonizing over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars here because basically the rest of this is funded, right? You've got two sixty for the bathroom. You've already funded a hundred for the shed. You got two fifty coming from ARPA. And so the delta is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and we're driving ourselves nuts for two hundred and fifty thousand.
There's a lot of two fifties on the table.
But there's another two.
Two, two fifties. One from. Right. For, for the sake of tonight, I think there's only two, two fifties. One is for, for ARPA related, which we could move tonight. Although we have the sticky issue, the committee didn't approve it, I think. And then there's the second two fifty, which you're asking for. I think that's what we're all talking about. I, I, I get it. I, I got it a while ago.
Ho- ho- hold on before we. Okay.
So, so when we're, we're showing the new bathrooms, that's currently the office, right?
Yes, for the theater.
It's currently enclosed.
Yes.
It currently has a purpose.
Yes.
So if you made that regular bathrooms and had the ADA inside.
You still need access to them from a building, from a roof. It's a code issue.
You're talking about over in the, the potting shed? You can't, they can't be there. Existing building, okay. I think they're telling you they don't.
They're basically switching where the office is.
Yeah.
The existing bathrooms and the office, they're switching because there's an unknown space where the, where the existing bathrooms are. So you have basically looking at that photo, you know, you had, now you had office space to the left and bathrooms to the right. At present, they're the other way. Okay. They're basically office to the right, bathrooms to the left. And we're just switching the two to make them work.
You can enter the office from the outside right now, but you couldn't enter bathrooms from the outside right now. So.
The current office is located outside the theater.
That's right.
If you have that bathroom, so you have to have access, internal access to it.
All right, Tom, you need that hand to be flashing.
Well, I just have a procedural question. I, I take Mark's point that we would benefit. I think we benefit greatly tonight if we could just separate out and solve the location of the potting shed bathroom as a separate issue. It would, it would greatly simplify the discussion, but I'm looking at the agenda. And there is no agenda item that really covers that. I think that item six on the agenda talks about the two fifty ARPA funds, which I think refers to the. Lobby extension. There's nothing on the agenda about the potting shed. Am I correct?
No, we don't, not on ours either.
So we, we have a follow-up meeting already that we're putting together. So.
Well, but the, the board of, the board of finance doesn't have to vote on that, right? On, on the location of the.
No, 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 that's not, not our swim lane.
Okay, so.
But, but where are we on this, on the committee? The ARPA committee has not approved this, correct?
We, we have not, yeah, we, we just, our last meeting. Was for the, the two items that were just approved, the telehealth and the, um, Silver Hill. Sorry, it's late. Um, and the.
Wave and.
The wave, uh, yeah, the two items that were on the agenda today, we have not had a meeting about. So from a procedural standpoint, I would not have said we should be voting for it, for them today. Now, we can, your meeting's coming up. If we have a meeting between now and your next meeting, that being the board of finance. And our town council meeting mid-May, then we, you know, technically we can.
No problem.
Take it then.
Yep. Yeah. Our regular meeting's a tenth. We'll have a special meeting on, on the last topic. Yeah. So lots of opportunities for that, but we need the committee to approve it before we could vote on it.
Correct.
Another, another issue is that. The lobby extension is either gonna be a go or a no-go. And to be a go, it needs half a million dollars, not two fifty. So unless, unless we're moving in that direction, it, I'm not sure it makes a hundred percent sense to. Approve just the ARPA piece and leave the whole rest of it in mystery. You know, we gotta find that other two fifty. There's that number again, uh, for, for the lobby project to really, to really take off. So I'm not sure what the magic is that, that.
Talk about it, but we need a proposal. We need, it's gotta be approved by the selectmen's office. It's gotta come to us. It's just gotta get done right.
Separate capital item, yeah.
Then we'll figure out how to fund it. You know, and we can fund it from a number of sources, including our.
Go ahead. Name is selectman.
The horse before the cart.
Selectman did in essence, said in the budget process approved the two fifteen. Excuse me, the, uh, two fifty ARPA, two fifty for the, both for the lobby. And then that, and then it, it stalled in the board of finance. And then it never made, and then it never made it to the council because it stalled in the board of finance in that process.
Yeah, I know.
That was the five hundred, correct?
That is not in the capital any longer.
No, no.
It was removed. Request at another time, but they say they need to know because it's a commitment in order to get the funding to move to the lobby. Am I hearing all that right?
In essence, yes. So yeah, the, it, it doesn't have to happen this evening, but there, there is a. There's a decision that has to be made as to how you wanna, you know. If you wanna fund the current proposal and how you wanna fund that proposal. Right now, the, the thought was two fifty from ARPA and two fifty from town funds. However, you want to, you know, fund it at that point. Obviously we bonded probably, but that's, that's the question is, do you want the project to move forward? And if so, how would you fund it?
Right. That's all we need to.
May I speak? I don't even know if I'm allowed to speak.
Of course, sure.
Um, the other issue is without approval from the town, we cannot go out and do the fundraising that.
We understand.
That is, it's been, but we want the right process to happen.
Mark. So just, just to be clear, so the two fifty that, when was that approved by the board of selectmen?
So the budget process during their deliberations, so.
Okay, so that was, okay, so that was pre and then removed from, so we'd have basically have to go all the way back to the drawing board. Is that?
Or special. Special creation or whatever. We have to start over on that.
We, we have lots of ways to get it funded. I think we just need this board to agree that, that we wanna do it.
Do you wanna, can we do a, a poll to get an idea? Cause I mean.
I, I don't know if the gang wants to have a ball. I just, they're not, doesn't mean anything. I, we just need to, well, we need this five hundred thousand dollars to come to us. And I think you wanna do the five hundred. You don't wanna do the two.
Well, what's the point? I know, but what's the point in, in approving a two hundred, uh, ARPA? If, if, if you're all, no one's committing to a five hundred thou-, I mean, that's. I understand. So there's, but you asked me if, if we're gonna do.
So I think, I think Mark, the two fifty would be a placeholder, basically. If the rest of the project gets greenlit, then that money goes with it. I mean, that's, that's the way it's gonna, otherwise it'll go back into the ARPA fund for another, another use. And remember, we have a long runway on the, on the ARPA fund. So, um, we don't necessarily have a long runway on some of this other stuff though. Amy.
Um, just to. Not, well, not to really poke the bear, but, um. Um, the, the entire project in the campus is, is more like one and a half million, right? And I know a bunch of that is bathrooms and stuff like that, um, you know, and I don't know. It, it would be a challenge for you guys, but I don't know if you could take on a bigger fundraising. Goal to move this project forward. And yes, I know it's town buildings, but it's town buildings that are used for your organization. And so I'm just throwing that out. Um, and it's, I mean, I can see what you're trying to do. So I think everyone is positive. It's just how do we, it's kind of is it, how do we balance it all? And we do have a police station going for this, super high priority. We do have the library that has contingent issues that, that we need to face as well. And I, I think we need to just figure out how we prioritize stuff. And I think from the board of finance. Part of the reason I think we pushed it off a year was just kind of in general, as we see projects come through, they kind of percolate. And they come up one year and we're like, okay, let's think about it. Let's see how they shake out and stuff like that. And it wasn't like negative or positive to it. It was just in terms of the priority of capital assets, things kind of popped up from our perspective. So, um, yeah, I, I just think, I think that was kind of our hesitation in the board advance, at least from where I sat. It was just like, uh, many worthy projects, but maybe it's took, need a little more time. And it, right now, the way it's looking at, we would be dedicating of six million in ARPA funds. Uh, a half a million of it just to this one aspect of the community. Well, if we, if, if we already did two fifty to offset the bathroom use and then there'd be another two fifty for the lobby. And then we'd have to come for another two fifty. So I, you know, I don't know if there's, um, if there might be, and I know it's a lot of money to raise. But if the entire project is more like one and a half million, certainly if you guys could think about it, like you have more capacity. And then of course they ask for us gets a little lower, which makes it maybe easier to do.
Uh, but I, again, that's the same issue. Without your two fifty approval, we cannot go out and fundraise and try to get more money. Which is what you're asking us to do.
It would be, it'd be fundraising for a different target.
Yes, with that, but again, we need the buy-in to even.
The approval leaves a gap. So it, it, it leaves a gap. So in and of itself, it's a, it's a, it's a funding to nowhere. So what you need is to put before this board, before five hundred thousand, which is what you're asking for. Just this two fifty, which is, which is a funding mechanism. It has nothing to do with the actual budget. West, which is five hundred thousand dollars. That's what we have to do.
We have, so we are the stewards, right? The tenants of a town building. And for me to come, imagine me coming to you and saying, we've got this great project, it's a town building. You love the project, but you say, so what does the landlord say? You're bringing arts into the community. What is the, what is the town say? So it, and I would say, well. Town's telling us, maybe it's not a priority this year. Maybe it's important, maybe it's not. So it's just really hard to try to get those matching funds when I don't have. You know, if I had two fifty from ARPA, then I could say, okay, town's given us two fifty. The, the budget process is going through. So now I'm gonna try to get to that two fifty. We're gonna match. And then you go through your process to get to the next, that the full half million. And I'm gonna continue fundraising the second half, my second half, second piece. But, but then we, we're building momentum with, without that, it's just. It just doesn't speak well. It's hard. It's very hard to get that matching.
Well.
And we already at.
Wouldn't you be in fairly good shape if the town said. If the project was presented to the towns and the need was five hundred thousand dollars and the town said, yes, we're in for five hundred thousand dollars. Now, how we fund that's what we're gonna decide. Now you can go to your donors and say the town's in it for five hundred thousand, as opposed to two fifty and we don't know where the other two fifty.
I'm with you. Absolutely. It doesn't matter where that comes from. It's dollar from ARPA, about four hundred ninety nine. Does I, doesn't matter. It, it just matters to have. I will tell you that I had, you know, my friends that have been following this discussion with, with us. After the, the last meeting basically said, well, you know, sent me condolence letters because they said, gee, it's, looks like the town doesn't support this. So, and I said, no, that's really not the case. I think we do have support. It's just gotta work through the process. So. Anyway.
Hillary.
Yes, I agree. I think it would be helpful to come with a, a number like this, this two fifty flying around is really confusing. So I think that would be helpful. I think a million. So I think that would be helpful. I think a million for the lobby, not a construction person, sounds like a lot. I don't know, I think maybe, those numbers could be a little smoothing.
Or detail.
Or detail, but I but I think that's a discussion for another time. It's kind of just like 10:30, I think we're all a little bit fried. I wish we could move on the potting shed discussion. I don't know when that comes up, or or when we can figure that one out. But I think. So the next steps, I I would think is going, I guess, to board selectmen to get that funding question settled, then to board finance, and then it comes back to us. But I think, you know, I think you do have support here from these bodies. I think it's just a question of where the number comes out and where it comes from. But maybe just a little like precision on that number.
Thank you, Hillary. Yeah, I mean, I mean, all the good, all the, this was a great presentation and great discussion. I mean, it brought us all up to speed together, and I think it's, we ended up in a good spot. I mean, you may not have gotten everything you wanted out of tonight, but I think we're in a much better place than when we started. And I think, Mark, if we get this ARPA discussion going, we are going to meet again, and.
So with regard to number seven, then, I move that we take number seven pending the ARPA decision to come before us at our next meeting.
Oh, we need a second motion on the floor. Robin, your discussion, all in favor of moving the, tabling the motion, raise your hands. Okay, that looks like it's unanimous, okay? Uh, Tom.
Well, just a question, when is the ARPA subcommittee getting together again? You know, Amy, when you're getting together, next time the ARPA subcommittee is getting together.
It'll be, it'll be before your meeting.
I'm, our, well, for sure, meeting is the tenth. We may do a special meeting next week just to move.
We'll try to do it by the end of the week.
This week, maybe this week.
Hey, whatever you need, man.
I like that.
All right.
Yeah, whatever.
So until I get that, we can't approve it, right? Yeah, so that's got to happen. So if that happens this week, we will, we will move next week. I still think we have to solve two fifty versus 500, that we have to, have to talk about that.
Christina, quick question.
I.
We're enlightening, we're enlightening right now.
So before we do that, can I do a motion here? I have to table this item as well. Okay, could I have a a motion to table item number five on your agendas? Second, Chris, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None? Okay, so move, thanks.
Christina.
I'd like to request that all the documents from this presentation, including the handouts, we put in our tablet, plus the other documents from the previous presentation.
Good reminder, and thank you very much, great point. Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Christina, second. Hillary, town council, all in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you, Tom, out there.
Motion to adjourn?
With your guests?
So moved, all done, done.
I I honestly think that's really important, very important. They don't see the logistics of what you're talking about. You've got it, you've, I think, a little walkthrough this week or next.